Alrighty, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Presipity Troy Hills Board of Education to order on November 14th, 2024. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper on the district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building in the schools and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to newspapers on November 5th, 2024. These include daily records, star ledger, Parcipity Focus, tap into Parcipity, Parcipity Patch and District Website. This regular pub- This regular public board meeting is being video recorded per by law 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and your video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Here. Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Goldur, absent? Mr. Chaffa?
Here. Stand for the Pledge of Lead.
Pledge of Leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright, we have our student committee reports. May we have, let's see, PHS first, please.
Good evening. I'm Emma Gonzalez from Parcipity High and I'm so excited to share these past week's events with you. Our Red Hawks Drama Club announced this school year's school musical yesterday. The musical will be Guys and Dolls. They have yet to announce their audition requirements, but our school is so excited for it. We cannot wait to see and participate in this year's musical. Our Drama Club has their drama, Little Women, on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd of 2024 at 7:00. Come support our drama, students, hard work. Our fall sports have ended, but sports like girls' basketball are preparing with conditioning for the season. We are so proud of all of our fall sports. Fall sports are beginning to have their banquet. We cannot wait to see all of our great winter sports like wrestling, girls' and boys' basketball, swim, and winter track. Our Parcipity Boys Soccer Team made it to their playoffs, but sadly lost their last game. We are still so proud of how far they have come. Our Parcipity High School Marching Band just attended Nationals and were able to compete and achieve their highest score of the year, and we are so proud. Last week, five members from our Parcipity High School Choir participated in the NJ SMA All States Honors Choir. We had so much fun learning the new music and singing with so many talented individuals. It was a great opportunity that my peers and I were able to participate in. The Spanish Honor Society and the Italian Honor Society had their annual Walk-A-Thon on November 2nd, and they walked approximately four miles and raised so much money for the charity Unisep. Clubs like A-. L-Lan and DECA are beginning to prepare more for their annual competitions in the winter. It's exciting to see our competitive academic teams prepare for their regional and state competitions. We cannot wait to support them as a school. Earlier this year, a couple members of Key Club had the pleasure of attending the Key Club Annual Rally at Six Flags, enjoying the day with fun Key Club activities and roller coasters. There is, um, you are asking, is there any update from the transportation comment from TRIAM from two weeks ago? Not yet?
No.
Good evening, all. I hope you're, all are doing very well. Starting this month's PHHS report with student council updates. Not much going on with student council right now as we just wrapped up a few events in the past few weeks, which went very well. We are currently working on our annual toy drive intended to support the battered women's shelter. This drive is being held from November 13th till November 27th. Now, moving on to events going on throughout PHHS. PHHS Choir will be having cider and cookies sale from the 13th of November to the 15th after school. There will be a badminton tournament on Thursday, November 14th at 2:30 PM. The tournament will host both singles and doubles. Top two teams will win a Born a Viking shirt in each category. There will be a 3v3 basketball tournament on November 13th at 2:30 PM. The top two teams will win a Born a Viking shirt. For this year's fall drama, the PHHS players will be presenting The Crucible by Arthur Miller. Display will be held from 21st of November to the 23rd at 7:00 PM at auditorium. This year's third college fair will be held on the 14th of November during unit lunch. All grade level students will be welcome. The PHHS annual Powder Puff Game will be held on 11th of November. PHHS Class of 2025 will be holding a fundraiser for Project Graduation. 25% of all sales at the Panera Bread at 34 Sillineway, Hanwha Township on November 12th from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM will go towards graduation funds. The final Share the Keys slash Open Campus Meeting will be held on November 13th, a requirement for seniors to be able, to be able to take part in the program. And lastly, the senior internship program has been kicked off with an interest form that will be due on December 2nd. Moving on to PHHS Athletics. Most fall sports seasons have ended, and now we are in the transition period to winter sports. Swim tryouts will take place on the 25th and 26th of November. The Parcipity Regional Ice Hockey Team will hold a dine and donate at Anthony Franco's, located on US 46 Parcipity, on November 21st from 10:30 AM to 9:00 PM. A Parcipity Hills High School official athletics account has been created on Instagram where people can find all things related to PHHS Athletics. Go Vikings! That is everything for today's PHHS report. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions for Tanisha or Emma? No? Thank you, thank you for the reports.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Well, we, we have a special treat tonight. We have Mr. Andrew Lattes, who's president of the Parcipity Education Foundation, who will discuss the grant awards for 2024, 2025. Andrew, it's great to see you.
Thank you to the Board of Ed for your time today. On behalf of the Parcipity Education Foundation, I'm extremely grateful to be here today to present our grants for the 2425 school year. Our organization was founded in 1996 to enrich the opportunities and experiences of students in the Parcipity Troy Hills District. Its Board of Directors consists of volunteers committed to developing a community of learners. The foundation awards proposals put forth by three groups who have direct involvement in the learning process, students, educators, and parents. We're so very thankful to the Board of Ed for giving us this opportunity today and for your continued support. November is our most enjoyable time at the foundation for many reasons. It gives us a chance to review and learn about the amazing creative approaches that so many teachers and admins in our district have towards the student body. Continually enriches us to know how much these teachers care about the children within the Parcipity School District. And they really do go above and beyond to meet the students and faculty's growing needs. Secondly, is a culmination of sorts because we now see all the annual fundraising hard, hard work payoff through golf outings, jeans days, food truck fundraisers, and much more. We are privileged to be a small vessel in helping our kids reach their full potential by awarding these grants to the Parcipity School leaders and teachers. We're so blessed to be playing a small part in enriching the student, teacher, administrator experience. This year, we're honored to learn about numerous opportunities to enrich our growing foreign language students in the district. We funded an interactive writing tablet at CMS High School for the language program. And we're assisting a build out of a bilingual library for our elementary schools. We also provide numerous grants aimed towards preparing our special needs students through team building, social learning, and more. In total, we provided over $2,000 to continually fund special needs programs such as trips to Life Town for our elementary school students and communication boards at Rockaway Meadows School. In addition, we're able to fund amazing creative extracurricular programs through the purchase of a laptop for our Par-Hi Robots, RedBots program, and innovative strength training program for athletic programs. It was very exciting to read about the It All Adds Up Grant that we help foster interactive and creative math learning, learning across the whole elementary school district. It will provide an array of math exercises that will consistently be used across all 10 elementary schools. This is just a sampling of the grants we awarded throughout the year that help enrich our school system. In total, we would like to provide this check in the amount of $17,920 to the Parcipity School District, and thank you so much for your service to community, students, and leaders.
Andrew, thank you so much. Thank you again, Andrew, and thank you for all the foundation does for the district. We really appreciate it. Well, Ms. Gilfillan is up with an Oprah presentation, but she, oh, there, there you are.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we are going to go over the new Oprah statue. I'm going to make it quick and painless, alright? So when did it change? June 5th, effective September 3rd. Why it changed? Because the municipalities had gotten together and basically explained to the GRC that there are real abuses that are happening with the Oprah statue. We have a lot of commercial folks coming in, asking for massive amounts of data, massive amounts of documents, and they wanted to put some curve on that. So what are the major changes? It protects certain, certain personal information from release. Typically, bank account numbers, social security numbers, they've added dates of birth. Here, we are always very careful about what's going out with respect to that. The other thing that they've included is personal emails and phone numbers. So anything that, say, an employee gives to you on a, on a application, that's all protected. They have found that some of the Oprah requests that are coming in are being utilized to put people on mailing lists, and therefore, we can give up, will give out the work email address as it's related to a request, but not home. Alright, what are the exemptions? Metadata, thankfully. Anything that we've had to produce, if there's metadata, we have to produce all of that metadata when it's requested. They've limited that basically to the data that identifies the author, time of creation, and any changes that were made. Any indecent or graphic images of persons intimate parts without their consent, written consent, requests pertaining to certain security systems. That has always been the rule. It was a rule through case development. They've just codified it now in the statute. Any information that gives bidders competitive advantages, such as a detailed cost estimate that may be provided by your architect or your engineers. Procedural changes. You have to adopt the specific form that the GRC has come up with. It's posted on your website. People are still allowed to request on their own. They don't have to utilize the form, but if they don't include all of the information that's on the form, the custodian can deny it. The form is actually very helpful because it specifies why you are denying or granting the, the request. Alright. Anonymous requests. You still have to fulfill them, but if you deny them, that anonymous request cannot be appealed. Requests submitted to other employees. So Mrs. Tedesco is your custodian of records. If, in fact, a principal comes into possession of a request for record, our time to respond does not start to run until Mrs. Tedesco's office actually receives that. Time to respond has been extended seven to 14 days for commercial-related requests. Immediate access, as you know, there are certain things that have to be immediately provided. Budgets, collective bargaining agreements, a lot of the stuff that's already on your website. If it's more than 24 months old, we have additional time to provide that. That's seven days. Records must be made available on your public website to the extent feasible. You are now allowed to refer people to the website, which has been your practice. If, in fact, they can't find it, you have to take an additional step and provide them with the link. Requests for mail, email, text messages, correspondence, or social media postings. Again, this is a case law. We've had specific requirements. You have to have keywords, you have to have a date, you have to give specific email addresses. So that has all now been codified. In terms of video footage for the security situations, if, in fact, you've been requested for that, people have to specifically give you the date, the time, or roughly around that time, and then they can come in to, to review that, that documentation or that video. There's a rebuttable presumption that the fees charged by the agency are reasonable. Parties to illegal proceeding are not permitted now to make an Oprah request. We had some difficulties where you'd have a discovery demand and a litigation. They, we then have, we have to review that, we have to review the documents to make sure that they're appropriate for, for discovery, and the litigants were actually getting the documents directly from our clients, which was a bit of challenging at times. Requesters have 14 days to retrieve their records once they're notified. After that, they go back. The important changes. The prevailing party is not automatically entitled to attorney's fees. And this goes to the idea of folks submitting these, purposely getting a denial, and then using this kind of as a funding mechanism. And then you can apply for protective order if you believe that the documents that you need to release should be kept confidential. I am happy to take any questions, but probably Mrs. Benos is much better prepared than I am. Yes, ma'am?
Is this going to really change? It's gonna, it's going to help her more than hurt her, right? Like, this is a better change for the district?
For the district? I would say yes, simply because it's much more clear, right? Our rules are clearer, and when the rules are clear, you get quicker answers, more time to, to respond. I think that's always helpful. Anybody else?
Oh, thank you, Kate. Thank you, Kate, really appreciate it. Is there any correspondence coming before the board?
No, there's none.
Thank you, Robyn. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing none. Before we move on to the TLC, we made the whole presentation, and I'd just like to acknowledge some dignitaries in the audience. We have our council vice president, Mr. Frank Negliat, in attendance. We have former board member Nick Combaris in attendance, and we have former, and I anticipate soon to be returning, board member Matt DeVito in attendance. I'd also like to thank the individual, the five individuals who ran for the Parcipity Board of Education in this year's election. It takes a lot of courage to, to do that and to put your name out there and to make the effort to, to run and to campaign and to try to get elected. So congratulations to Mrs. Mayor on her reelection. I mentioned Mr. Barrios, sorry, Mr. DeVito, on what I anticipate will be his reelection to the board and the number three position. We're locked in a tight neck and neck race with two incumbents, Mrs. Abraham and Mrs. Goldur. So best of luck to each of you and, you know, hope the final outcome is, is determined soon. Alright, Chief, I'll turn this off. Over to you.
Thank you so much. As today's TLC meeting is a committee of a whole, and we're just, as you can see by the agenda, we have a number of books in the English for Mythology to be reviewed, as well as the English for Fantasy and Fairy Tales. I hope that everybody had a chance to review these mythology books and fairy tale books at your convenience. At this time, are there any questions about any of the books in particular?
I could speak to them a little bit, too, if you want.
Please.
Sure.
Certainly.
So we've got, these are two new courses we'll be writing this summer and implementing next year. These are senior semester courses. We, again, we've moved away from English for and moved to options that students could select based on their interests. You know, we want kids to want to read books about things that they're interested in and get good books in their hands that are relevant and engaging and things they're going to really, really get enjoyment out of. So the first one is English for Mythology, a semester course, as I said. And these six titles are all books filled with magic and good versus evil and, you know, mythology, okay? As our book club books, we want to give a wide array of different types of mythology. So this is kind of mythology around the world. You've got a Persian book, Egyptian, Celtic, Norse, African, and Japanese. So you're giving kids options to explore how different cultures develop and view mythology and what it represents in their cultures. English for Fantasy Fairy Tales. A lot of these are retellings of classics. So of course, the Grimm Brothers are ones that we're familiar with. They've been around with for a long time. Zelle is a take on Rapunzel. And there are more books coming this way that are retellings, and I know, I enjoy those. As I, as I read and go through these books, I kind of like, if I'm, to be honest, I prefer the fantasy stuff over the mythology. I go back and forth, you know what I mean? But they're all great, and I think kids, we think kids are going to love them. And we're excited to, again, get good books in kids' hands.
Sure, Wendy.
Could I just ask, Dr. Mulren, we need to say a little more about the book club model, how it functions in a class?
Absolutely. So sometimes we'll do class novels. That's, that's a traditional experience that we all had, you know? We're reading the same book at the same time. You're assigned a couple of chapters every few days or every week. You come in, you take a quiz, you take a test, you write a paper, you do a project, very traditional. We're still doing that, but usually once or two times a year, kids will have a chance to, or take in a book club. So they're selecting one book out of a series of high-level, high-interest options we give them, and they'll be in a pot of like four to five students, and they'll kind of read that book and discuss as a group, you know, what they're finding. Hello, that was like a foot and a half away from my head. That wasn't, that wasn't, yeah. So the teachers will give them some prompts about things to discuss, and the teachers will sit in on those at point in times. But I think you're teaching students how to, you know, independently read a book and, and think about it and, and have joy. Hope these are future like adult book club members, you know, eating cheese and charcuterie boards and, and all that other fun stuff. So it's, it's a great model. And again, this was, this is, some teachers embraced it wide open arms, other ones were a little reluctant because it's, it's a left turn from what we're used to, but it's been really successful and we're really happy with the, the process.
Thank you. And as part two, we do have, as part of the counseling curriculum, we have for high school, middle school, and elementary, and I will ask Dr. Mulren.
No problem. So this used to be one curriculum, K to 12, for counseling for a long time. And I think our counselors rightfully so said, we, we need to chop this up and make, make more representative of our clientele. So we have our elementary, middle, and high school, they were revised this summer by counselors. We were just fine tuned in, in September, Ms. Wegasa, and then I took another look at it. And you'll see, if you, if you were inclined to check it out, just the progression of skills, social skills, academic, and then ultimately professional and postgraduate skills that kind of changes as kids get older, as they transition from elementary to middle to high school and then to college. So we're happy with what it represents as far as what our students are, you know, what's expected of them and what's the next, you know, step in their lives.
Can I just ask, if, like, these are the new curriculums, are they to be implemented, like, this year that we're in right now, or is this something?
Sure.
For next year?
For this year. So once we're approved, they'll, they'll hit the ground running and, you know, they're kind of implementing the, the overlap stuff right now from the, the current one that's active, but then we'll transition to this one.
Any other questions? Any other questions on part two? And part three, there's eight courses from seventh grade and up, mostly nine through 12, one quarter class, and I want to say five, six, five full-year courses and two semester courses. Do you have any questions on any of those?
Do you want the exciting lowdown on each course? Cool. I, I always enjoy the new course discussion. So we, we have eight here. Two didn't make the cut, alright? So we, two, we just felt they weren't right, appropriate at this time. But I'll take you through a brief overview of each one. Information literacy, as, remember, we had our high school media specialists present this a while ago, working with the freshman sophomore history classes? So this is kind of a precursor to that at the elementary, at the middle school level. We're going to use it to replace sports and literature. Sometimes I liked it, of course, is kind of have a shelf life, and I think sports has kind of hit that wall. So information literacy, we're debating seventh or eighth. Will be, on one level, kids and their cell phones. You know, what's appropriate use for a cellphone, you know, what's, what's there? And then we're getting into, you know, online use with our Chromebooks and research and what to believe, what not to believe, all skills that they'll need as they progress through high school and then move on to college. Okay? ESL Newcomer, Newcomer Course. Yeah, so I think it's, it's, this one's been developed out of need. It came from Parcipity High. Right now, we have 60 ESL students at the high, there's 20 at the hills. So this, it's, it's impactful at the high school, at the high. And this Newcomer Course is a semester course that's going to try to take all the, the daily living things out of the ESL class. So the ESL, ESL class will be about English and academics, where this ESL course will be, you know, using your computer and, you know, navigating the building and just adjusting to life in America and the different things that we have that they may have not experienced. We can run it the first or second semester. Sometimes, you know, we'll get kids coming to the school a little bit later, but we have this space in the, in the schedules of our current ESL teachers. So it's kind of a no-brainer. We think it'll be a really beneficial course for our kids. Honors, multi-variable calculus. I do not understand, okay? But this is a math class that comes after calculus. There's been a need for that as we've, as we, as we put together our advanced math track that starts in fourth grade. We're now at a point where these students, that we've run out of courses. And it's a good problem to have. The classes will be small at first, and Brian McCourt, our math teacher, he understands. So that's all that matters. And our wonderful math teachers do as well, but as an English teacher, this is beyond me. AP Seminar and AP Research we currently run, we run them 10, 10, 11. We're going to give the option of having students do this 11, 12, purely as a way to support our new pathways that are coming along. As students do their culminating project in their pathway, it dovetails nicely with AP Research. So if you let juniors take it, they can finish out their senior year and, and it kind of serves two masters there. Authors of New Jersey and Literature in the Psyche are the last two senior seminar courses we're going to run and we're going to, going to offer. They're honors courses. Feedback from students and some teachers, that'd be nice to have some honors options at senior year, so you could, they could do a semester of honors, taking like Authors of New Jersey, and then take a semester of horror, which would be a regularly weighted class. I'm excited about the Authors of New Jersey one. There's some fantastic authors here in the Garden State, and there's some great books that I think kids are really going to love, from funny books to horrifying books to really thoughtful, kind of pensive books. So we're excited about that one. And Literature in the Psyche, kind of that psychological flair that I know a lot of readers enjoy. The last one is AP Business Principles. This is an AP course that's currently in development. It has a little bit of finance, a little bit of marketing, a little bit of accounting, some case analysis, there's an entrepreneurship aspect to it. So it's a great course. Granted, these are all things we currently offer, but this is in one AP course, and we're, we're putting it on the list with the hopes that there's some development in the spring, and if maybe there's some schools that want to, could pilot, you know, we'd love to take a risk and take a bite of that apple because we're not. If we can help our kids and give them the opportunity, we'd like to have that on the radar. So thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dr. Mulren.
Thank you.
Any other questions for TLC? Alright, seeing none. I'll start with Dr. Wright for Transportation.
Sure. Sorry, with a lack. The Transport Committee met on... Reading something else, I apologize.
It was yesterday.
It was two days ago.
It was two days ago.
And indeed. So the Transport Committee met with Transport Leader Tiffany Pizza Hiltz, our Business Administrator, Robert Tedesco, Allison Cogan, Tim Barrios, and myself. And there were two agenda items. First, the review of the, an update of the Traffic and Safety Report, which is a report that was originally commissioned in 2007 and is reviewed regularly on the particular needs of our students in the district, particularly those students who reside within the two miles for K to eight in the two and a half mile radius. It's not actually a radius because it's measured by how you might- Uh, it's not actually a radius because it's measured by how you might walk to school, um, particularly for thinking about when there are hazardous conditions, uh, that might make it unsafe for students to walk within those boundaries. We reviewed, uh, the grid to determine that and it was determined that the grid continues to be a good tool. Uh, and we agreed that it would be useful to, uh, in addition to posting the report, which is currently available on the website, to post a summary, giving a bit of an explanation of how it has been update, updated, as well as making, um, public, and this is a, a longer term project over time, making public a list of those hazardous areas and how they have met the criteria for hazardous areas within the district. We also, uh, received an update from Ms. Tesco on the DRTRS report, which is a report due to the state, um, based on a snapshot of those who are transported or eligible for transport by bus as of October fifteenth, due to the state on November, November fifteenth. DRTRS means District Report of Transported Resident Students. Um, and this is a state requirement to submit this report to the state and it's the mechanism through which the state awards funding back to the district for transport. Um, and that is, it's done, which is, it's, it's not even due until tomorrow and it's done because Ms. Tesco's fantastic. And the meeting concluded at six thirteen PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Any questions for Dr. Wright? Mr. Wright, do you have a Finance Committee report?
Yes, uh, on October twenty ninth, we had the Finance Committee of the whole, so we were all here for that. Um, I just have a couple of follow-up questions, um, that were brought up. Have we gotten their certificate of occupancy, occupancy yet, uh, Ms. Tesco?
We have a temporary C F.
Okay.
We did not get the permanent C F yet.
Okay. And, um, and then it was said that the audit should be completed by mid-November. Today is the fourteenth. Are we close or?
I have, actually, sitting here, I have one report that I still need to get to them.
Okay.
And I'm working on it.
Alright, great. So, we're very close then. Um, and then the due date for the submission of the audit has been moved from December to January fifteenth.
Yes.
And, but you, you were fine with the old deadline, which was in December.
We would make the deadline this, this year.
Sounds like you're, you're like way ahead of schedule anyway.
Yeah, I pushed it over the summer to make sure that we were gonna be on schedule now, yes.
Okay. Um, any questions?
Mrs. Chappelle.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, so the HR Committee met on November twelfth, present were, uh, Ms. Mayor, President Choffo, Mr. Ricker and myself via phone. Uh, thank you very much for accommodating that. Um, there were, uh, a few things that we talked about, a number of personnel matters that were confidential. Uh, we had a couple of staffing updates. You might recall that we had some opening in the Spanish teachers in our elementary school, so those have, um, on the bulletin for approval tonight. Um, and then all the other openings that we had are all covered. Um, the, we have a new Pace Lab Student and Staff Support Specialist role that's on the agenda. And then finally, uh, the big news, we have our Hills Athletic Director opening up. Uh, the great news is that, uh, Mr. Ricker and team are all over this, um, and have plenty of candidates who have applied and in the process of screening them. Um, so we've got interviews that are set up, uh, for the week of November twenty fifth. Any questions from anybody?
Thank you.
I do have another one. Um, so, last night, um, we had the E S C at Morris County Meeting, um, and, uh, it was no real news to share from there, um, just, uh, some regular updates, um, staffing changes. Uh, they did touch on the fact that, uh, they are having further reductions in staff and teachers specifically because they have fewer students, um, so that is just something to keep our eyes on. Uh, they did bring up the topic of, um, governance, um, and Governance Committee specifically within their board. Um, and, uh, this is something that I also attended at the workshop. And, uh, just to highlight to everybody, on December fourth, um, there is a Morris County Meeting where they're actually doing a Board Governance Presentation. Um, it is the same one I went to at the workshop. I highly encourage anybody who's interested to attend.
If I can add, prior to that meeting, actually at five thirty is a, um, a three R's of, uh, which is state training through NJ SBA and it meets the, uh, regional, uh, requirement for board certification.
Thank you. Judy, do you have a report?
For transportation, um...
No, not for transportation.
For sports committee.
Yes.
Um, in lieu of the committee, uh, meeting, um, Mr. Ricker had sent us the following update, um, the girls lacrosse co-op was denied because we had, they didn't think there was a need for that. Um, the schools had twenty-four, twenty-five girls, totaling forty-nine and that, they didn't feel that wasn't enough. Uh, Mr. Devenard said that we should be okay with our numbers this year to run two independent varsity girls lacrosse teams. Um, the NJ S I A A offered an appeal process, but both athletic directors felt that they could run separate programs this spring. Um, based on the timing, it is the interest of both programs to move forward with scheduling and hiring coaches rather than delay the process based on the appeal. Um, the athletic directors at like each high school made the recommendations for each coaching staff and have already started to reach out to local schools to find, to compile a full schedule of competitive games and scrimmages for the spring. Um, you'll note in the bulletin, resignation of Claire Herman at the Hills. She's returning to Morris Hills High School where she was a former head coach, um, of the Spring Track Program. Um, the position has been posted, Dr. Thompson is planning to begin an initial, uh, round of screening and then by, let's see, a second round to conduct interviews on the twenty-sixth. And there were approximately fifty candidates, including two internal, so, thank you, Mr. Ricker.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Mayor? No, seeing none. Allison, do you have a reporter liaison or anything?
Uh, well, my liaison was the, the PG Foundation and we just saw what we did.
Right. And you guys met Tuesday also, right?
Tuesday.
Correct, okay. Uh, Tim, I know there's some policies on the agenda, but I don't think policy has met.
Policy is not.
Thank you. Michelle.
Uh, we, uh, had talked about, uh, sharing what we learned at the workshop, just wondering where we're going to do that.
Um, without objection, we can certainly do that now.
Okay.
Go, the floor is yours.
Alright, so, um, uh, again, very happy that I was able to attend. Uh, I was there for, uh, two and a half days. Uh, I attended eight different sessions, um, a great variety, some really great instructors. There was one or two courses that really weren't up to par, um, and gave that feedback. In fact, there was one that Ms. Cogan and I attended and the instructor never even showed up, um, so unfortunate. Um, but I was able to attend, um, uh, Robert's Rules, where they were reviewing the Robert's Rules of Order and how to conduct, uh, a proper meeting. Um, we went through, uh, formal collaboration, uh, which was really all about, um, how dependent parties need to work together for optimal success for student achievement, um, with, it, it was founded on, uh, the listening, the making sure that they listen to understand to find common ground. Uh, went to, uh, scaling an esports program that captures students' love for gaming. Um, I know you guys, you might hear gaming and you think video games, it's much, much more than that. Uh, esports is used, uh, the idea is that esports are used in curriculum involving a wide set of categories to unlock future potential and opportunities for our students. Um, uh, in addition to that, there's a heavy focus on inclusion and diversity because in our student population, you've got lots of opportunities to be involved in sports and clubs. There's some kids who just don't fit the mold of the typical things that we offer by having esports and actually building out programs around that. You're o- opening it up to a more diverse set of students. Um, and there's also strategic career exploration and development, including technology, broadcasting, marketing, hospitality and many, many more topics. Um, there's actually a return on investment, so if schools that have built this out and built facilities, you know, they actually have separate rooms for this. They offer it up for external clubs to use, community events, uh, and summer camps. Uh, so there is actually a money-making opportunity off of that as well. Um, and of course, there's also the value addition for educators where on a cross-curriculum basis, they get to work together to bring out the different opportunities. So that was really good. Uh, just to highlight there, most schools start at the club level and then once they see the interest growing, they start to build it out from there. That was very interesting. Um, Effective Committees Through Good Governance, which is the course I just mentioned, um, the, uh, it is typ- typical things, many of the things that I think we do in general here in Precipity, um, but there's more formality to it, that many, uh, many boards actually have a governance committee and I think we've talked about that at our last session. So I know we're doing some work around that. Um, we have, uh, I also tended, uh, Do More with Technology to address top priorities. Um, there, there was a group of people there from Apple and they were sharing different, um, different technology and tools that are available in the classroom to make teaching easy, to make communication easier, to help students explore how to use technology in different ways, including using clips to create videos, uh, that then have the ability to be translated to different languages, real time. So that's something interesting. Um, using iPads, um, to, uh, you, to translate when you have teacher conferences with parents who might not have a first language and we might not be able to get a translator. Um, they, uh, for where you have classes that, uh, students are responsible for speaking, um, they can use iPads as a teleprompter to practice with. Um, and then they also share the, the benefits for our early learners. Um, the, I also did attend Governance Three, so I checked, you know, that, covered off on that requirement for next year. Um, so mandatory training for third year, focus on labor relations, labor laws, negotiations and dispute resolutions, um, and fostering positive relationships. And then, uh, the second part of it was around focusing on curriculum, monitoring student progress through qualitative and quantitative measures, uh, and then ensure access and development, um, to our district's curriculum, which we have well covered. So, um, all in all, it was very good, um, very good experience. Uh, it was nice to be able to get to spend some time also with fellow board members periodically, um, so, uh, all in all, a good event.
Thank you. Excellent. Anyone else? Mrs. Chappelle.
Thank you. I attended Monday through Thursday, actually. I ended up taking about ten workshops and went to all three of the keynote presentations, which I don't usually do. Uh, as usual, I found it very informative and definitely learned something from each workshop that had a presenter. Um, the highlights for me were the keynote, uh, from Rita Chang, who is the founder of Robogals, Aapoli and Autobot. She was really amazing. I also went to the Power of Committees and the handouts that I received are in our packet and that was a very good presentation. I attended the State Board of Ed Panel. It was interest, interesting to see there was two or three new Board of Ed members and they were all there and it's, it's definitely a diverse board and there were some members that were interested in, in seeing a reduction in, in the exit testing, um, for the high schools, you know, seniors out and they also, a few of them stressed paying attention to the legislation and the rules that were coming down because they felt that there was maybe, you know, some legislative overreach on mandates and rules and they encouraged local boards to speak to their representatives about that as well. I went to an E, on different esports workshop that was about school and community engagement and it definitely stressed, you know, um, the different kids that would enjoy that kind of, um, esports. And, uh, the next workshop was Making Alternative Revenues Realistic, which I thought was very good because we're obviously always trying to figure out how we can bring in more money. So that handout is also, uh, in our packets now. And then on Thursday, went to the School Law Forum, which I heard a lot about the Oprah that Ms. Gofillen just talked about. And there was also a lot about security and one of the main takeaways from his presentation was making the kids feel involved in school and included in the school so that they felt like they were a part of the community. And to me, that really tied back to the esports curriculum because it reaches a whole different group of kids like Mrs. Chappelle spoke about. So the security, obviously, there's, you know, physical things we can do for security, but a lot of it is just making the students feel like they want to be there and they have friends there and they have somebody can talk to.
The community.
Yep, absolutely. So, that was my workshop experience this year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Wright?
Great, thank you. Uh, so this is my, you know, first year being on the board. It was my first time going down to workshop and I was really impressed at the overall quality of, uh, the organization as a whole, um, as well as the, uh, presentations throughout. Um, I attended Tuesday through Thursday and, uh, also I went to eight or, eight or seven or seven with a two-parter for my required training. The two I want to mention, uh, in detail here are two, uh, about climate surveys. And so I attended one presentation, um, that was given by the, um, it's referred to as the NJ Sky Platform, which is a collaboration between, uh, the New Jersey Department of Education and the Rutgers, uh, School of Applied, uh, and Rutgers School, it's the Graduate Psychology Department there. Um, and they have produced a validated school climate instrument that is available in thirty-three languages for students and families and is, uh, available for free to all New Jersey school districts. Uh, and they discussed the advantages and disadvantages of, um, this kind of climate survey, which reaches out, this, the NJ Sky Platform is to students and families, um, as well as to staff in the district to get a sense of how folks are experiencing the day-to-day life of the district. Um, and particular insights to, uh, thinking about comparing things as they go to grade, gender, race, ethnicity, uh, and identifying particular climate strengths and needs. Uh, the other climate, uh, presentation I went to, um, was called, But What Do the Kids Think? Uh, and this was a case study presentation, uh, given by, uh, two gentlemen who are now administrative leaders elsewhere, but at the time, they, uh, were, uh, leaders in Madison and they developed their own climate instrument, um, and they had, you know, kind of robust social science backgrounds and they discussed, you know, the advantage of, and theirs was only sent to students, not to staff or families. But they had specific things that they wanted to understand, uh, particularly around the connection between well-being and, uh, student performance. Uh, and they, you know, kind of talked, they, they talked us through the, uh, process of developing and implementing this meaningful climate survey and then how they collected their data and analyzed it. Um, and particularly because they were doing, um, data that was not fully anonymized, the advantage of one of, of the Rutgers data is that we, is Rutgers does all of the processing. They don't keep it, they don't report, Rutgers doesn't keep it, they don't ke, uh, give it to the state, uh, but they give it to us without any identifying data. Uh, the Madison case study is not anonymous, rather it's confidential data, so they apply a, uh, student ID tag that is disconnected from any student record, but it enabled them to kind of see in very granular ways, um, which student, students in which particular statuses were reporting, um, uh, feelings of connection versus feelings of isolation. And I think it's another way of getting at those students who maybe aren't being seen in various and sundry ways. Um, and they had some, it was clearly they had someone who'd taken a good class in data visualization and some heat maps, those are always nice. Um, and, uh, and the advantage of both is that they create opportunities for, uh, board members, the public leadership to understand what various constituents are experiencing. Um, and then that becomes a basis for further conversation and action. I just was really impressed by, um, both of those presentations and how they fit together. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Wendy on that? Thank you so much. Sheathel, Tim?
I would like to, but my total, so I'll try next.
I did, Tim. The Oprah, Oprah presentation, um, which Kate touched on a lot of the highlights and I thought, boy, this is gonna be a boring presentation, it's Oprah. But the, um, the presenter was, I, I think the director of the GRC, he was definitely employed by the GRC and he was not only a fantastic presenter, but he, he just relayed the data in a way that was, uh, interesting and, um, I actually remembered some of the points that you reiterated, Kate. Um, and... And also achieved school governance for, which is a school law update. Again, very, very interesting, as presented by an NJ SBA attorney. It was, it was great. The, anybody have a favorite booth or stand on the, on the floor that you enjoyed visiting? No? Nothing that comes to mind? Okay. How, how about those lunches, though? That's, the cuisine is outstanding. Top, top-notch. Dr. Sutter, I'm sorry. Someone must have enjoyed it because Ms. Pennels has been getting some phone calls from me. I gave your name out quite a, quite a few times, yeah. I generally try to get business cards from other board members and drop them off into little fishbowls that are at the vendor tables. But now everybody scans, and I can't do that as effectively, but such is life. Just, any other committee or liaisons? Just a brief, a brief update, and we'll talk a little bit more in closed session on our negotiations with Local Thirty-two, which is the union that represents custodians, maintenance workers, and, and bus drivers. We had three meetings with them. We can't obviously disclose publicly the contents of the negotiation. We will brief the board later in closed session. All right. So moving on, we have executive work session minutes of October seventeenth and regular and executive minutes from October twenty-ninth. Can I have a motion, please? Michelle, second. Allison, roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Berrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Obstain on the executive minutes of the twenty-ninth. Yes to everything else.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Uh, yes. So, Dr. Sutter, we are at Superintendent's, Superintendent's bulletin number seven.
Thank you, President Chaffo. Good evening. As per Dr. Jagandi's testing presentation last week, she wanted me to mention that she just received updated information confirming that two students in our district participated in the WEDA alternate access testing during the spring two thousand twenty-four administration, and both students demonstrated proficiency and were exited from the district's ELL program. As Dr., as Mr. Chaffo said, the BOE Local Thirty-two Negotiation Committee began in-person negotiations on October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We have since met on October thirtieth and November thirteenth. We have another meeting scheduled for December fourth. For those who are unaware, Local Thirty-two is the district's custodial maintenance and bus drivers organization. On October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, I was asked by Dr. Rick Falkenstein, Superintendent of the Kingwood School District, to speak at the Association of School Administrators Small School Committee. I was asked to be the guest speaker in order to give guidance, feedback, and suggestions concerning the lessons I learned when moving to a larger district. The workshop was conducted via a Google meeting. Finally, it's with a heavy heart that I announced to the Board, to the Board of Education my intent to retire from the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education effective July first, two thousand twenty-five. It has been a privilege to be part of this school district and to work alongside such a talented team of professionals throughout the district. I'm grateful for the opportunities for growth and development that Parsippany has afforded me over the last nine years. Through the spirit of teamwork, a commitment to fairness and general kindness, I believe the district has flourished. The Parsippany Troy School District is a fantastic place, and I know you will continue to flourish for many years to come. Tonight for your approval, we have Superintendent bulletin items one through twenty-nine, with addendum and read-in items thirty through forty-six.
Any questions for Dr. Sutter on the bulletin? Secretary's report, Robin, please.
Hi, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motions, and it was very short, so that's all.
And that was very short. Questions for Robin?
Very short, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Under new business, there was one item that was submitted by Mrs. Mayor on board certification.
When we had done our board goals, one of our board goals was to work towards the Carol E. Larson Master Board Certification. And I researched it, and before we can go for that, we have to go for the board certification. So you have to, it's kind of in steps. A lot of it is, is stuff that we do and we've done already, like participate in at least one full, well, not full-day retreat, but, or equivalent board workshop. So a lot of the board certification we've done, and we have to get that, all those parts done before we can go to the Carol Larson one. And when you get your certified board, there's just a, like, ten additional hours of training. That's really all you have to do after you get that. So I think we should keep track somehow. I mean, I know that New Jersey school boards, or somebody keeps track of our accomplishments, but I think somebody should, like, be checking off the boxes to see that we have done this. So I don't know how, you know, what, if there could be a committee or, or, you know, somebody or whatever.
Right now, we have six for, for certification. We get the report.
Okay. Okay. So we're doing what?
So what's the, what's the process to let them know that we've met all these requirements?
What do you mean? Well, once we get all these, it says meet all the, if the credits are not, okay. Certification will be maintained for four years. So if you meet all of these, you're a certified board. Then you have to, within the first two years after getting that, you have to continue and get ten additional hours of training. So that's really all you have to add to what you've done.
Is there some kind of report we need to file to let them know that we?
Well, Joanie just...
Of all of this?
Yeah.
Basically, Charlene will say, guess what, guys? You've done it. Okay.
Yeah, they'll, they'll send, they'll shoot whoever the president is an email and say, your board has earned certification. And then they'll make a big to-do at the next meeting, you know, we'll all clap, and we did it. And then you go on and try to earn the Carol E. Larson, and that, that's a big honor to do that. So it would, that, that was a good goal, I think, for us to put out there. But I think in our goal, it really is to achieve board certification. And then the Carol E. Larson, I think we have to do one before the other. So I don't know if we change the goal or what.
In the goal, it says to achieve board certification by two thousand twenty-six and master board by two thousand twenty-eight.
And that's it?
Yeah, sure enough. Yeah, so the, the board goal document is on the Superintendent's bulletin for approval tonight. So let's, let's make sure that that document gets approved. And then I, I would suggest, you know, given we're in a quote-unquote lame duck session at the moment, that we remand how we advance that goal to the next board that'll convene with the reorganization in January, and we, we work on that. Well, we're on, you know, the topic of board goals. I was talking to Allison earlier today on just the timing of the board goals document, because it comes at a weird time, right? It comes at the end of this session of the board, and in January, we'll, there'll be a, not so much a new board, but a, a reconstituted board with potentially new leadership. And, you know, we're discussing just how did the board goals get to where it was? And I think we determined that it kept getting pushed later and later and later. Because if you go onto the NJ SBA website and you look at the timings, they recommend, these are done concurrent with the board self-evaluation. So I, I, I would suggest next year, let's see, you know, where, where we are, but I would suggest to the board that we try and accomplish as many of these goals that we're going to consider approving tonight, but then try to get back on schedule so that we're having our board, board goals concurrent with the beginning of the new school year and with the conclusion of our board self-evaluation. Do you want to add anything to that? No?
No.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we are at the hearing of the public. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful, if you would like to address the board, to please come up now and sign the book so that you're ready when the first speaker is finished. Reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask you not to provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments and refer to Biolo zero one six eight for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, hearing that, we will close the public session. Roll call vote. Superintendent bulletin number seven, items one through twenty-nine, with addendum items thirty through forty-six. And read-ins, may I have a motion, please? Mrs. Mayor? Dr. Wright? Roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Berrios?
No on one, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Uh, yes. I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel issues. That's not personnel issues. It's going to be negotiation issues this evening. There will not be any action taken by the board at the conclusion of the closed session. Can I have a motion to go into closed session? Michelle, second. Sheethol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.